Greetings Ambassador Anstrom, thank you for joining us. Greetings delegates excellencies. Thank you for, we'll be starting in a few minutes, the chair is with us which is great. We're just, we're a few minutes before three, so just a kind reminder that if colleagues have yet to do so, if they're able particularly delegates joining to indicate their country affiliation using the rename function that will really help Ambassador Anstrom with the moderation and knowing who to call upon. And if you just bear with us, we'll hand over to Ambassador Anstrom in two or three minutes, thank you. Ambassador Anstrom, again thank you for agreeing to chair this important session of evaluation. I think we're at three o'clock exactly and we have fifty seven participants. So if you're really ambassador, we can hand over to you to begin, thank you.
Thank you so much Sam and distinguished delegates, good afternoon. I declare open the fifth meeting of the second regular session 2020 of the executive board of UNDP, UNFPA and UNOPS. We shall now take up agenda item thirteen, UNFPA evaluation. Today we have before us for discussion the annual report on the evaluation function 2019, document DP/FPA/2020/3 and management commentaries contained in document DP/FPA/2020/CRP3. We also have before us the evaluation of UNFPA's capacity to respond to humanitarian crisis, document DP/FPA/2020/CRP4 and management response contained in document DP/FPA/2020/CRP5. All the documents are available on the UNFPA website. Before introducing the panel, let me just quote and support UNFPA stating that "evaluation is key to accelerating the delivery of International Conference on Population and Development, United Nations reform and achievement of the SDG by 2030." Evaluation provides evidence on what works and what does not, for whom and under what circumstances and why, in addition to validating good practices and lessons learned. So now let me introduce the members of the podium. We have Diane Keita, UNFPA Deputy Executive Director. We have Marco Segona, Director of the Evaluation Office. Shaqueline Mahon, Acting Director, Policy and Strategy Division. Shoko Arakaki, Director, Humanitarian Office and Sam Schoritz, Chief of the Executive Board Branch, UNFPA. Distinguished delegates, we shall proceed in the following manner. Marco Segona will introduce the annual report on the evaluation function 2019. Following his presentation, Diane Keita will present the response for the UNFPA management. Following those presentations, I will open up the floor for discussion. After that round of interaction, Mrs. Segona will then introduce the evaluation of UNFPA's capacity to respond to humanitarian crisis, followed by the management response to that evaluation, again presented by Ms. Keita. Following those presentations and the management response, I will open up this floor for discussion. So I will now invite Mrs. Segona to present his annual report. So Mrs. Segona, you have the floor.
President, members of the executive board, good afternoon. It is my pleasure to present the 2019 annual report on the evaluation function. This is the third year that the Evaluation Office is reporting against nine key performance indicators that show the performance of the function, including key achievements and areas for growth and improvement. The annual report also captures the evolution function contribution to coherence in evaluation across the United Nations system as well as its support to national evaluation capacities. Further, it presents the 2020 program of work and budget for the Evolution Office. Madam President, distinguished delegates, please allow me to begin with a few words of the Evolution Office's efforts to accelerate delivery of SDGs, Nairobi commitments and the United Nations reform. As part of the office commitment to the United Nations reform in 2019, the Evolution Office continued to enhance coherence among the evolution functions across the United Nations systems by actively engaging and collaborating with other agencies through joint and system-wide evaluations. In this regard, almost fifty percent of centralized evaluations managed by the office in 2019-2020 are either joint or system-wide. In 2019, the Evolution Office also continued to actively support UNDAF evaluations, providing technical and financial support in all regions. Through its active participation in the United Nations Evaluation Group, UNEC, the office provided technical advice for the development of the United Nations Funding Compact, the revised guidance for the United Nations Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework and the revised policy for system-wide evaluations. The office also continued to actively engage with the Interagency Humanitarian Evaluation Steering Group. To accelerate the implementation of the program of action of the International Conference on Population and Development and SDGs by 2030, the Evolution Office undertook a metasynthesis of fifty-seven UNFPA country program evaluations to highlight validated good practices and lessons learned to achieve sexual and reproductive health and rights. To ensure evaluative evidence provides strategic direction to UNFPA, the Evolution Office further enhanced the facilitation of use of evaluation by providing targeted and timely evidence-based technical advice to support decision-making. In 2019, the office also enhanced communication of evaluation results and improved its accessibility. This was achieved through the development and implementation of a new strategy to facilitate evaluation use through communication and knowledge management. Madam President, I will now turn to the evolution function's performance. Out of the nine key performance indicators in 2019, four have achieved their targets, three are on track and two require improvement. Please allow me to provide further details. Regarding the indicators for which the target has been met, for the first time in 2019, one hundred percent of evaluation reports were rated of good or higher quality. And for the first time in 2019, the evaluations managed by UNFPA also exceeded the swap gender equality key performance indicator on evaluation. Further, the design of all new country program documents was clearly informed by evaluation. In addition, management responses were submitted for all centralized and decentralized program evaluations. All completed evaluations at both decentralized and centralized levels, together with their quality assessments, were posted on the evaluation database. Regarding indicators that are on track to be achieved, the implementation rate of decentralized evaluation raised to ninety-two point seven percent in 2019 compared to fifty-five percent in 2017. The evolution coverage increased from eighty percent in 2017 to ninety-seven percent in 2019. Further, nearly all UNFPA country offices in 2019 were staffed with a monitoring and evaluation focal point or officer. Madam President, members of the executive board, please allow me to outline the indicators that requires improvement. In 2019, the amount budgeted for the evolution function represented zero point ninety-eight percent of the total UNFPA program expenditure. Although the budget invested in evaluation has increased from 2014 to 2019 in a very constant manner, there is room for further improve the financial resources invested in evaluation to reach the range of one point four to three percent as stated in the evolution policy. Further, there is a slight decrease in the implementation of manager responses in 2019 at eighty-four point five percent with implementation of manager responses of decentralized evaluations at fifty-nine percent. Madam President, I am pleased to report that one hundred percent of centralized evaluations scheduled in 2019-2020 have been completed or are on track to be completed. In 2019, seventy-four percent of evaluation were managed by country or regional offices, ensuring a right balance between centralized and decentralized evaluations. Now allow me to say a few words on the function's work on supporting national evaluation capacity development and multi-stakeholder engagement, a central pillar of UNFPA evaluation policy. UNFPA continued to partner with major stakeholders, including United Nations entities, in order to support national evaluation capacities. In 2019, the Evolution Office became a member of the EVAD Partners Executive Committee, representing the United Nations system together with the World Food Program. Taking forward the office's strong engagement with diverse stakeholders in the evolution sphere, in 2020, the Evolution Office, together with the EVAD Youth Global Network and the Global Parliamentary Forum for Evaluation, launched the Decad of Evaluation for Action, also known as the EVAD for Action campaign. The campaign is in full alignment with the Secretary-General Decad of Action. In a short span, the campaign has brought together over one hundred partners from all over the world to strengthen evidence-based policies to accelerate the achievement of SDGs. Through the framework of the campaign, the office is committed to strengthening national evaluation capacities and enhancing the role of youth in influential evaluation. Madam President, member of the executive board, during this decade of action, an increased focus is needed on the implementation of ICPD and the achievement of SDGs by 2030. The challenges on this road are now further compounded by the COVID-19 pandemic. In this ever-changing dynamic environment, evaluation provides strategic direction by revealing what works, what doesn't work, for whom, where and why. At UNFPA Evaluation Office, we remain committed to producing relevant quality and timely evaluative evidence and facilitating its use for decision-making to end maternal mortality and met needs for family planning and gender-based violence. This concludes my presentation, madam president. I thank the executive board for the continued support and guidance.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Segona, and I will now give the floor to Diane Keita for management comments.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, distinguished member of the executive board, I am pleased to present UNFPA Management Response to the Annual Report on the Evaluation Function for 2019 and seek your support in endorsing the evaluation program for 2020. As we all agree, a strong evaluation function is a key contributor to achieving the result of the strategic plan 2018-2021 and supporting the realization of the three transformative results. UNFPA has been investing an ever-increasing share of its program budget in the evaluation function and I'm pleased to note that this investment is already yielding results. We recognize the far-reaching benefits of the evaluation for the organization and beyond strengthening transparency and accountability to our member states, partners and more importantly, to those that we serve. Let me take this opportunity to highlight and welcome the increase in evaluation coverage from ninety percent in 2018 to ninety-seven percent in 2019 and a solid performance with ninety-three percent program level evaluation implemented as planned. This will provide the organization with a large body of knowledge to further support evidence-based informed decision-making when developing our new programs, to reflect on lesson learned and to identify positive practices that can inform a whole of organizational approach. Responding to the executive board decision 2019/1, increased evaluation coverage was made possible in part through the use of the Financial Ring Fencing Mechanism for Evaluation Budget put in place by the Evaluation Office in collaboration with the Policy and Strategy Division and the Division of Management Services. We commit to continue setting aside annually half a million of US dollar through the resource allocation system to ensure that smaller country program benefit from program evaluation. We know that quantity without quality would be inadequate and I am pleased to note that the quality of evaluation has improved significantly with hundred percent of program level evaluation rated good or very good in 2019. Given that there is a direct correlation between the quality of evaluation and the quality of future program, it is not a coincidence that the use of evaluation in program development was up in 2019 as well to a record hundred percent. However, the management also recognized that there is room for further improvement, especially with regard to implementation of evaluation recommendation actions. While the overall implementation rate was solid at eighty-four percent, we do recognize that the fifty-nine percent implementation rate of centralized evaluation was unacceptably low. I take the opportunity to assure member state on behalf of the management that we take this issue very seriously and that we have put in place additional remedial measures to address it. We enhance our guidance to business unit and we started to monitor progress through UNFPA's corporate dashboard. With regard to communication and knowledge management, we acknowledge effort made by the Evaluation Office to develop a strategy to enhance evaluation use through communication and knowledge management, which focus on providing targeted evaluative evidence to decision-makers. In this context, management also welcomes the new practice of making evaluation result much more accessible and available to broad audiences by accompanying each centralized evaluation with a minimum communication package, element of which were funded by the Swiss Agency for Development and Cooperation. Moreover, we welcome the sentience of finding from fifty-seven country program evaluation which have aggregated existing knowledge on what works and what does not. on what works and what does not. The findings will support our country offices to create more effective evidence-based programs, use resources optimally, and maximize impact for those we serve, women and girls. We also acknowledge the Evaluation Office's support to strategic evaluation events in order to bring together demand and supply of country-led evaluations. Madam President, looking forward, we note the Evaluation Office's program of work and budget for 2021 and affirm our commitment to working with the Evaluation Office to carry out its important role in supporting the achievement of organizational results. We also welcome the Evaluation Office's commitment to greater UN coherence, exemplified by their planned participation in joint or system-wide evaluations. This trend, as it is in line with the principles of our Strategic Plan 2018 to 2021, to make partnership one of the key modes of engagement, and it resonates with overall vision of the UN Development System Reform for a whole-of-system approach. Madam President, in conclusion, I would like to reemphasize that UNFPA management acknowledged the progress made by the Evaluation Office in 2019 and reaffirmed its commitment to greater accountability, transparency, evidence-based decision-making, and organizational learning. I thank you all on behalf of UNFPA management for your continued guidance and support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keta, for your comments. And I will now open up the floor for any comments or questions to the presentations. While delegations are preparing themselves, can I just say that I welcome UNFPA's and its Evaluation Office's efforts to further strengthen the capacity to evaluate programs, and I continue to encourage UNFPA to continue the coordination with other UN organizations and developing joint UN-wide evaluations. Thank you so much for the presentations. See if we have anyone asking for the floor. Before we continue, I do not see anyone asking for the floor. So in that case, I will invite Mr. Sagona and to present the evaluation of UNFPA's capacity to respond to humanitarian crisis. So, Mrs. Sagona, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So distinguished delegates, it is my pleasure to now present the main findings of the evaluation of the UNFPA capacity in humanitarian action. The purpose of this evaluation was to assess the organizational capacity of UNFPA in humanitarian action in terms of both preparedness and response. Covering the period 2012-2019, the evaluation assessed UNFPA humanitarian programming against the evaluation criteria of relevance, effectiveness, coverage, and connectedness. This evaluation is based on solid evidence collected and triangulated through a total of 437 key four-months interviewed across 15 countries and more than 500 documents reviewed. Madam President, distinguished delegates, please allow me to present the key highlights of the evaluation. Despite the financial constraint, especially when it comes to regular resources, compared to the increasing needs, UNFPA demonstrated there are significant trends of positive progress in performance across many aspects of humanitarian action between 2012 and 2019. As a result, UNFPA and its mandates have gained increased visibility within the humanitarian sphere. For this, UNFPA should be commended. However, overall, UNFPA's systems and processes remain predominantly geared towards development, and the 2012 humanitarian strategy requires updating. There are clear output-level results of maternal and newborn health services and some evidence of gender-based violence service delivery effectiveness. However, there is a need for more robust and comprehensive measurements of outcome and impact. While it has become more difficult for UNFPA to mobilize core resources to deliver its mandate at a global level, UNFPA has been increasingly successful in mobilizing external humanitarian sources at country level, such as pool funds. UNFPA has also increasingly strengthened its human capacities in the humanitarian field with many highly knowledgeable humanitarian experts and improved search capacity thanks to the addition of an external roster and standby partnership. However, there is a need to increase broad-based humanitarian expertise organization-wide, including on protection from sexual exploitation and abuse. UNFPA demonstrates good practices in delivering commodities at the beginning of an emergency, but can be slow to reach areas of urgent need. A renewed focus on speed and pre-positioning of commodity in key locations is therefore needed. Madam President, distinguished delegates, please allow me to turn to the five recommendations that were prioritized by the Evolution Team within a set of 12 recommendations. First, UNFPA should develop a strategic framework for its humanitarian action, accounting for changes occurred in the humanitarian system and in the specific accountability of UNFPA since the adoption of the UNFPA's second-generation humanitarian strategy in 2012. Second, UNFPA should review its data sets and monitoring systems to identify current gaps and bottlenecks and develop a comprehensive data management system to allow reporting of outputs and outcomes at all level. Third, UNFPA is invited to review its corporate approach on preparedness for supplies, including where necessary, regional stockpiling, and national pre-positioning that considers speed as critical as cost and quality. Fourth, UNFPA should develop a comprehensive plan for increasing humanitarian expertise at all levels of the organization. Fifth, UNFPA should conduct a survey on knowledge and capacity to protect from sexual exploitation and abuse at country level with the aim of identifying the current bottlenecks between global and country level. Madam President, distinguished delegates, in a context of ever-increasing humanitarian needs, especially taking into consideration the COVID-19 pandemic, UNFPA is required to continue further strengthening its humanitarian capacity and to expand the range of its interventions. It is my hope that this evaluation will equip UNFPA to increase even further its capacity to end unmet family needs for family planning, preventable maternal deaths, and gender-based violence, including in those countries affected by conflict and disaster and despite the COVID-19 crisis. This concludes my presentation, Madam President. I thank you and the Executive Board for its continued support and guidance, and I'm at your disposal for any questions or clarification. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sagona, for your presentation, very clear. And can I then give the floor to Ms. Keta for management response? Keta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, distinguished members of the Executive Board, I am pleased to present the management response of the evaluation of UNFPA capacity in humanitarian action and seek your support for the management response and our follow-up actions. More than 25 years ago, at the International Conference on Population Development, the world's governments agreed on ensuring that all refugees and all of the all-over persons in emergency humanitarian situation, particularly women and adolescents, receive appropriate health care, including sexual and reproductive health, care and information, and greater protection from sexual and gender-based violence. This agreement reached in Cairo in 1994 catalyzed UNFPA's work in humanitarian setting. As we all agree, we will not be able to achieve the sustainable development goals unless strengthened action is taken in countries affected by humanitarian crisis and fragility. It is indeed in these settings that more than half of all maternal deaths take place and risks increase for gender-based violence and harmful practices such as child marriage. These risks are significantly increased today due to COVID-19 pandemic. UNFPA fully accepted 11 recommendations and partially accepted one recommendation out of the total 12 recommendations of the evaluation of UNFPA capacity in humanitarian action. We consider the evaluation not only a learning opportunity, but also an opportunity to drive transformative change in innovative and accountable ways. The response to this humanitarian evaluation is a top priority for the management of UNFPA. We are indeed already in action to implement these recommendations. As you know, UNFPA established a new humanitarian office in 2019. This was in response to escalating humanitarian crisis and an increase in the needs and the centrality of lifesaving humanitarian work to achieve UNFPA organizational mandate. This is also to accelerate our focused delivery with partners on the three transformative results by 2030: zero unmet need for family planning, zero preventable maternal death, and zero gender-based violence and harmful practices. In particular, UNFPA is working to strengthen our accountability and to enhance our humanitarian operational capacity around preparedness and pre-positioning of supplies. We are working to strengthen data collection and reporting and human resource management and human resource capacity for humanitarian leadership and response. I would now like to highlight several key recommendations. In response to recommendation one, that UNFPA should develop a strategic framework for humanitarian action, UNFPA will develop an accountability framework with specific corporate performance indicators on priority area to make UNFPA and its humanitarian action fit for purpose. For recommendation four, that UNFPA should review the corporate approach on preparedness for supply, including where necessary regional stockpiling and national pre-positioning. In response, UNFPA will implement a comprehensive approach on preparedness for supply in line with the recommendation. This will include increasing the stockpiling of key humanitarian supplies, guidance on national preparedness and pre-positioning, the development of humanitarian supply training, and the revision of the minimum preparedness action. As part of this effort, UNFPA is finalizing a humanitarian supply strategy covering a five-year period from 2021 to 2025. I now turn to recommendation five, that UNFPA should develop a comprehensive plan for increasing humanitarian expertise. In response, UNFPA will develop a comprehensive human resources strategy for humanitarian response, which includes addressing UNFPA leadership capacity for the Interagency Standing Committee mandated area on gender-based violence coordination and programming. This strategy will accompany will be accompanied by a targeted resource mobilization plan. In response to recommendations six and seven, UNFPA will ensure that humanitarian issues are integrated in the upcoming guidance on leaving no one behind. We will further advance UNFPA's commitment to the ground bargain commitment on inclusion and accountability to affected population. For recommendation eight, that UNFPA should conduct a survey of knowledge and capacity on protection from sexual exploitation and abuse at country level to establish the current bottlenecks between global level and country level. In response, UNFPA will conduct a global survey to assess impact and effectiveness of its response for the prevention of sexual exploitation, abuse, and sexual harassment. The objective is to measure capacities and awareness at country level and to identify remaining gaps and possibility for improvement. This work is timely as UNFPA will assume responsibilities for the Yask Championship on Protection from Sexual Exploitation and Abuse and Sexual Harassment in 2021, taking over from UNHCR. In addition, based on the recommendation of evaluation, UNFPA commits to strengthening our leadership on engagement of young people and determining the resources required to translate UNFPA's global commitment into country-level action for youth and peace. UNFPA commits as well to an enhanced knowledge management approach, ensuring the systematization of reproductive health working groups and the development of more ambitious vision for UNFPA's humanitarian data. Madam President, member of the Executive Board colleagues, we welcome the recommendation as we move forward to strengthen UNFPA. We will track and monitor progress of the work outlined in management response against the evaluation recommendation. UNFPA will share this progress with the Executive Board at the annual session in 2021 with an update on the impact of COVID-19 on the implementation of recommendation. I thank you on behalf of UNFPA for your continued guidance and support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keta, for your explanation and your comments. And I must say that I truly appreciate the positive developments and trends when it comes to UNFPA's humanitarian action and look forward to continuing to closely follow the implementation of the recommendations, the 12 recommendations. Thank you so much. I will now open up the floor for comments and questions. And I recognize the permanent representative of Guatemala to whom I give the floor. Ambassador, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, for giving the floor. I want to begin by thanking the Evaluation Office's presentation of the report of UNFPA's capacity to respond to humanitarian crisis, and the 12 recommendations contained therein. Guatemala values the ability of the UN system to contribute to global efforts that address current and future humanitarian crisis effectively in a coordinated and coherent manner. We therefore support the strengthening of UNFPA's humanitarian mandate and support working on a more pronounced integration of the tri-pole nexus within UNFPA's strategic plan. In this sense, we generally support the 12 recommendations in the report and would like to highlight some of the activities that are being carried out in Guatemala through the technical cooperation and financial contributions made by UNFPA in the context of the humanitarian and emergency response plan, that aim to address the most vulnerable populations and reduce gaps caused by the pandemic, particularly in the areas of maternal health, gender-based violence, and violence against women and demographic dynamics and statistics. In addition to the assistance received in those areas, we are also grateful for the contributions made for the preparations and dissemination of communication campaigns to reach the most vulnerable populations with the Ministry of Public Health and Social Assistance and other government ministries and entities. The report emphasized that UNFPA demonstrates a positive trend of working with national actors and humanitarian coordination, but some sectoral gaps remain, particularly around youth. In this context, we further welcome the assistance provided to specific initiatives such as the Youth Against COVID-19 Campaign that provides a space for civil society groups and young leaders to exchange and share information regarding the pandemic with social media and other communication campaigns with social media and other communication campaigns in Spanish and capital languages. Finally, we also recognize the contributions made to civil society organizations in the form of dignity kits and protection and hygiene supplies to address the particular needs of the most vulnerable women and adolescents, women with disabilities, domestic workers, incarcerated women, victims and survivors of violence, among others. We believe UNFPA has an important role to play in addressing humanitarian crisis and its capacity must be strengthened. We hope that UNFPA in its humanitarian programming and country programming can continue to support our immediate and long-term efforts toward addressing this national emergency. You can count on our support moving forward on this matter. I thank you.
I thank the permanent representative Guatemala for his remarks. And I see no other delegation asking for the floor.
Ambassador, we have Finland, Finland and Australia requesting the floor.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So I will then give the floor to the representative of Finland. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. I hope you can hear me. Thank you, Madam President. Finland welcomes UNFPA significantly strengthened role in humanitarian action. As we have seen during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, women and girls are often the hardest hit in emergency situation, like as has been mentioned also earlier today in the previous session. UNFPA has a key role in safeguarding sexual and reproductive health and rights in the most difficult contexts. Finland fully supports this essential work and welcomes UNFPA's management's commitment to more systematic approach towards sexual and reproductive health and rights at country level. We welcome UNFPA's active role in disability inclusion, namely in the development of the IASC guideline published 2019 and look forward to the elaboration of UNFPA's own inclusion strategy. To conclude, we would be keen to hear whether and how counterterrorism laws and other restrictive measures impact the implementation of UNFPA's operation as these are not mentioned in the evaluation. I thank you very much.
I think the representative of Finland for her remarks. And I will now give the floor to the representative of Australia.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you and presenters for the helpful updates. Australia is pleased that the evaluation found significant improvement in UNFPA's humanitarian action and we're grateful for the clear output level results, particularly on the effective delivery of maternal and newborn health services. And going forward, we're looking forward to seeing a plan that embeds a robust measurement of outcomes and impacts as was recommended by the evaluation. The evaluation also recommended a review of the corporate approach and preparedness for supplies. And for us, we value the partnership we have with the UNFPA Asia-Pacific Regional Office to deliver the regional pre-positioning initiative, which is a high-performing and innovative program pre-positioning sexual and reproductive health supplies to use in emergencies across the Asia-Pacific. So we look forward to continuing that work and highlighting its achievements going forward. We have a question. And as the evaluation happened before COVID, as was noted, we would appreciate an update from management in how the recommendations specifically will be taken forward in the new, more challenging global humanitarian context we're in. And we saw positive examples of UNFPA staff seeking to incorporate feedback from communities, particularly women and girls, into the programmatic cycle. But we note that the evaluation said this wasn't always implemented in a coherent or systematic way. And we appreciate UNFPA's strong local community linkages and local feedback mechanisms. But we know they manage and structure it in a relatively ad hoc way. So we encourage UNFPA to align your activities under an overarching framework here. And finally, like my Finnish colleague said, we're keen to continue working with UNFPA on ensuring people living with disabilities are included and supported to be able to have a voice and be active participants in humanitarian response. Thank you.
I thank the representative of Australia for her comments and questions. And I see no other delegation requesting the floor. So I will turn to to Mrs. Segona and Ms. Keta to respond to the comments and questions raised by delegation. Mrs. Segona, would you like to start, followed by Ms. Keta? You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Yeah, mainly, mainly, I think that there were, for the Evaluation Office, there were mainly some comments. And I think I hear two questions that were mainly addressed for management. So I will leave them to the Deputy Executive Director program to answer. Just to say that from the Evaluation Office perspective, we really, we thank the Executive Board for the continued full support and guidance when it comes to the evolution function in general, as well as to individual evaluations. We take note also of the words of appreciation. And even more importantly, we take notes, as a, as a mention by Madam President and also the distinguished delegates of Guatemala, really on the importance of the coordination also from the side of the evaluation function. And that's why, as I presented the previous item, we are really very keen to continue to maintain the high level of joint and system-wide evaluations, including in the humanitarian settings. As I mentioned, the Evaluation Office is an active member of the Interagency Humanitarian Evaluation Group. And we are co-leading on behalf of the UN system a number of evaluations, including one that is ongoing just right now on how the UN system has responding, has been genders responsive in their response to the humanitarian setting. So we will continue to work together with the other agencies. And once again, thank you very much for the full support and guidance from member states and the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much again, Mrs. Segona, for your, for your work and for your presentation and comments to this, to this meeting. And I turn to Ms. Keta for her response to comments and questions. Ms. Keta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to to thank the distinguished representative from Guatemala, Finland, and Australia for their comments. For Guatemala, thank you, Mr. Permanent Representative, for your express support. Regarding the sectoral gaps on youth, we have worked with UNICEF to address the youth in humanitarian setting as at the Interagency Standing Committee level. The importance of multi-sectoral approach with young people actively engaged where necessary is absolutely key and part of our response and recovery to COVID-19. So your point is very well taken. And we will ensure that youth, along with all affected population, would be taken care of and very inclusive. As response to distinct delegates from Finland and Australia, it is true that UNFPA is leading the youth compact in the humanitarian setting. And we work on inclusion of youth in peace building at the global, at the global level. Humanitarian setting has a prerequisite for the grand bargain. It is clear that the nexus peace and security and humanitarian and development absolutely prerequisite for all the work being done on the field. We will keep you informed as we we implement our program and the recovery program from the COVID-19 as we move along. Because as you know, security and peace moves are not very flexible and we'll keep you posted on that. Thank you very much.
I thank Ms. Keta for her response and comments. And if no other delegation wish to speak, we have concluded our discussion. Do we have anyone else?
No, okay. Madam, Madam Chair, we have your apologies, Madam Chair, apologies. Australia had asked as well the work with disability person very much. And we will ensure that we work with them and we include them in every, in every response we are going to give. We have already developed guidelines for disability since 2018 and will apply to all our work. Thank you very much. And my apologies to Australia.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keta, for that and for your previous comments and replies to member states. So I see no other delegation wishing to take the floor. And that means that we have concluded our discussion. And I'd like to thank Ms. Keta and Mrs. Segona for their participation and for the presentations and to delegations for their in this meeting. Sorry, someone has the microphone on. Sorry, I'm just checking if someone wants to speak. No, okay. I wish to inform the board that a draft decision on the agenda item thirteen evaluation is being prepared. We will revert to this item later under agenda item sixteen other matters when we will adopt outstanding draft decision for this session. So I thank all of you very much for this session. And I will now hand over the podium to the President of the Executive Board, Ambassador Webster, for the next item on our agenda, which is the UNFPA programs and related matters. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ambassador Anström. Ambassador Webster, are you ready to proceed with the next segment at this point?
Thank you very much, my friend Ambassador Anström. Maybe we can take a two-minute stretch. I will myself go and get some water and then we will resume. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you, Ambassador. So it's maybe around three fifty or so. Thank you.
Sorry?
Maybe around ten to four.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Sam?
Yes, Ambassador.
Whenever you're ready, let me know.
Ambassador, I'm ready. We're in your hands, Ambassador.
Okay, so I'm ready. I'm ready.
Ambassador, maybe can we just give it two more minutes? Because we said it and we're a little, just for those who take that time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Two minutes, thank you.
Good afternoon. Oops. Good afternoon, colleagues. We shall begin, I think. Sam, are we ready?
We're ready, Ambassador. We're ready, we're ready.
Right. Distinguished delegates, we shall now take up agenda item fourteen, UNFPA Country Program and Related Matters. In accordance with the Executive Board's decision twenty fourteen slash seven, new country program documents are reviewed and approved at the same session. Today, colleagues, we have before us for discussion and approval nine country program documents. Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Colombia, Indonesia, Kazakhstan, Serbia, including the results and resources framework for Kosovo. Noting that with the references to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the context of the Security Council's Resolution twelve forty-four nineteen ninety-nine. Timor-Leste, Turkey, and Turkistan also. We shall also consider a number of we shall also consider a number of country programs, extensions, Burkina Faso, Madagascar, Yemen, Algeria, Cameroon, China, El Salvador, Lebanon, Libya, Mozambique, Tajikistan, Zambia, and Zimbabwe. First, let me introduce the members of the podium. We got with us Ms. Keta, who UNFPA's Deputy Executive Director, program whom we were very pleased to meet this morning, her first time in the job in this capacity with the board. Alana Kamage, Regional Director for Eastern Europe and Central Asia. We also have Mr. Leschborn Anderson. He is the Regional Director for Asia and the Pacific. Further, we have Mr. Robinson, Regional Director for Latin America and the Caribbean. And Ms. Jacqueline Mahon, who is Acting Director, Policy and Strategy Division. And also with us is Sam, Samuel Curran, our chief to the board. We shall, distinguished delegates, excellencies, we shall begin with the Deputy Executive Director for Programs, Ms. Keta, who will make some introductory remarks and provide an overview of the country programs and extensions to be presented today. The UNFPA Regional Directors will then present the new country programs from their respective regions in which they will also provide an overview of the main trends from their respective regions. After each regional presentation, I shall open up the floor for discussion. After each regional presentation, I shall open up the floor for discussions. I will begin by asking Ms. Keta to take the floor. Jenny, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, distinguished member of the Executive Board, it's my honor to address the Executive Board today. And first of all, I would like to thank you for your continued support to the UNFPA mandate. I am pleased to provide introductory remarks on UNFPA Country Program document and related matters. Table for your approval are the following nine new programs. Table for your approval are the following nine new programmes. For the Asia and the Pacific region, country programmes for Republic of Indonesia and the Democratic Republic of Timor-Leste. For the Eastern Europe and Central Asia, country programme for the Republic of Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Republic of Kazakhstan, Republic of Serbia, the addendum of proposed result framework for Kosovo. Reference to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the context of the UN Security Council Resolution 1244 of 1999. Republic of Turkey and Turkmenistan. For the Latin America and Caribbean region, country programme for the Republic of Colombia. As Member State have been informed, a corrigendum was issued on 31 August containing the withdrawal of the country programme document for the People's Republic of China, DP/FPA/CHI/9. Furthermore, an addendum to the document on extension of country programmes are also being issued containing a two-month extension for the country programme for the People's Republic of China as recommended by the government and in accordance with our procedures approved by the Executive Director. Finally, a corrigendum to the country programme document for Republic of Indonesia requested by the government was issued on 1 September. These new programmes represent a combined total budgetary allocation of 99 million US dollar with 43 million US dollar of regular resources. They were developed through a transparent and participatory process with the full engagement of the respective government, UN country teams, partners and stakeholders. The programmes were informed by evaluation recommendation and respond to respective national development priorities, the Agenda 2030 and Sustainable Development Groups. The programmes are also derived from the respective UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Frameworks. Mr President, having listened carefully to the feedback from Member State, we would like to assure the Board of our continued commitment to ensuring substantive alignment with the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework and country programme document timelines and sequencing. Since the issuance of the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework Guidelines in 2019, 2020 has been a transition years towards realising full alignment of the programme instrument timelines. UNFPA acted swiftly last year to update our internal guidance. As a result, the country programme document outcomes are exactly the outcome of the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework with relevant outcome indicators and their inputs are either direct outputs of or critical contribution to the Cooperation Framework Joint Work Plan. All our country offices are required to secure the resident coordinator's clearance of the draft country programme document, certifying alignment with the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework. Furthermore, all UNFPA country offices are mandated to secure endorsement letter from the government before country programme document are processed for Executive Board approval. Internally, our Programme Review Committee vetted the programme document for quality, including for alignment of our programme with the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework and national priorities and aspiration. We will continue to work with our sister agencies and the UN Development Coordination Office at all level to ensure close coordination. Mr President, distinguished delegate, Covid-19 pandemic and its socio-economic implication have exacerbated the fragility of health and protection system across the world and accentuated the suffering of the marginalised, most disadvantaged and hardest-to-reach group, especially women and adolescent girls. The country programme documents were developed against backdrop of these challenges and are designed to respond adequately to new and emerging complexities in their respective contexts, including the long-term implication of Covid-19. UNFPA commits to build its current response effort on the ground alongside with other UN agencies and partner and in alignment with national Covid-19 response and recovery priorities. The proposed programme align with the UNFPA Strategic Plan 2018/2021 and the envisioned result will contribute to achieving the three transformative result of ending unmet need for family planning, ending preventable maternal death and ending gender-based violence and harmful practices. I take this opportunity to thank the Executive Board and Member State for your inputs and feedback on the country programme document that has enriched the document. Excellencies, we also present for approval the extension of country programme for Burkina Faso, Republic of Madagascar and Republic of Yemen in the context of alignment with national processes. The first-time extension of country programme for People's Democratic Republic of Algeria, Republic of Cameroon, People's Republic of China, Republic of El Salvador, Republic of Lebanon, State of Libya, Republic of Mozambique, Republic of Tajikistan, Republic of Zambia and Republic of Zimbabwe are approved internally by the Executive Director as per procedures. UNFPA stands ready to continue its support and work with respected government on the implementation of this country programme and we look forward to hearing more detail from our Regional Directors here today. Please allow me to reiterate my gratitude to you Mr President and to the Member of the Board for your continued support to UNFPA to deliver our collective mission in this decade of action. I thank you.
I thank Madame Kaita for her remarks and we shall move along distinguished delegates. To the next speaker, I now have the pleasure to invite Ms Alena Hamitich, Regional Director, Eastern Europe and Central Asia, to present the country programmes for her region. Madame, you have the floor.
Thank you very much Mr President, Excellency Ambassador Webson. Excellencies, distinguished members of the Executive Board, dear colleagues. Good afternoon, good evening and warm greetings from UNFPA's team in Eastern Europe and Central Asia. Many of my colleagues are joining us tonight online. On behalf of the team, I am very pleased to provide an introduction to the draft country programme documents for the Eastern Europe and Central Asia region, highlighting the regional context and how the proposed country programmes respond to it. The six country programme documents being presented today, Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, the addendum of proposed results framework for Kosovo under UN Security Council Resolution 1244 of 1999, Turkey and Turkmenistan, as well as the five that will be presented at the January 2021 Executive Board, constitute over two-thirds of our 17 programmes in the region. These new programmes then provide an unprecedented opportunity for UNFPA to advance the efforts and transform results for those we serve in Eastern Europe and Central Asia. I'm very proud of the way in which my country, regional and headquarters colleagues have worked together with government partners, civil society, representatives of disadvantaged groups, UN agencies donors, other development partners and the private sector to co-create and share their experiences developing innovative solutions and amplifying results to be achieved in the country programme documents. The proposed CPDs are firmly framed within the priorities of the United Nations Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework and the Agenda 2030 and SDGs. They connect UNFPA's vital mandated country level with national development priorities, including the commitments made by the governments at the Nairobi Summit on ICPD 25. They further connect UNFPA's action to the wider mega-trends we see around us, ensuring our relevance, sustainability and impact. Mr President, I would like to thank you and the Executive Board members for their comments on the draft CPDs, including during the informal session we had last week. The total indicative regular resources for the six CPDs and addendum results framework for Kosovo is just over $20 million for the next five years. We recognise the need to raise and leverage additional resources at country level with the support from regional and headquarters levels. I'm pleased to report that we are more ambitious in our targets for raising other resources in the CPDs and that we are well on track across the region as a whole. Many programme countries in Eastern Europe and Central Asia also contribute funds to UNFPA core resources and I would like to take this opportunity in line with Dr Canem's message earlier today to express our sincere gratitude to all donors to core. As this year has shown perhaps more than any other, flexible core resources are the essential lifeline of UNFPA, enabling us to fund unforeseen activities immediately, including our Covid-19 response. I would also like to appreciate the countries and organisations who made or who make co-financing contributions to country programmes in our region, including the Russian Federation, the European Union, the governments of the UK, Austria and Canada, as well as our own programme country Member States like Kazakhstan and Turkmenistan whose CPDs are being presented today. We look forward to further partnerships to achieve the exciting and essential results that are set out in each of the country programme documents. Mr President, the presentation of these country programmes does come at an unprecedented time. The global Covid-19 pandemic is devastating communities and economies across the world, including in our region. UNFPA in partnership with other UN agencies has been supporting governments in the development and delivery of their national Covid response plans, recognising that the pandemic has increased the vulnerability of marginalised populations, made it ever more challenging to deliver essential sexual and reproductive health services and exposed women and girls to an increased risk of gender-based violence. We have joined together with sister agencies and civil society partners to strengthen our response for the health, protection and rights of older persons who have suffered disproportionately from the pandemic in our region. Likewise, through the Regional Issue-Based Coalition on Gender Equality, we have harnessed the UN's regional assets to support national assessments and to address the needs of women and girls. While the development of the six country programmes and the addendum for Kosovo presented today began in a pre-Covid period, they have taken into account the preliminary assessment of the pandemic's impact, especially on the most vulnerable, and to ensure linkages of the identified goals to the Covid-19 responses. The country programmes reflect a number of challenges in the region related to the unfinished ICPD agenda and the aspirations for achieving the SDGs. These relate to national concerns around demographic change, access to information, education and services that ensure sexual and reproductive health for all, ending gender-based violence and harmful practices and fulfilling the potential of all young people. Mr President, distinguished members of the Executive Board, government concerns related to Europe and Central Asia's major demographic trends are at the centre of many of our country programme documents. Very low fertility, outmigration, population ageing and population decline have critical implications for the achievement of the Sustainable Development Goals. The CPDs are addressing these issues and will be supported by ICARO's new Regional Demographic Resilience Programme, which will support national statistical offices, census, data analysis and evidence-based policymaking. These issues feature prominently in the country programme documents for Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina and Serbia and the results framework for Kosovo, where we have strengthened our capacity and partnerships in this area. Because demographic concerns transcend the boundaries of our programme countries, we also look forward to expanding our engagement with institutions in European Member States and the Commonwealth of Independent States. At the same time, our CPDs continue to focus on harnessing the full potential of young people, working with national partners to ensure that all young people have access to relevant information and services related to their sexual and reproductive health. With proportionately higher percentages of young people in Central Asia, the proposed country programme documents for Kazakhstan and Turkmenistan highlight results in this area. Challenges also exist with regard to achieving sexual and reproductive health and reproductive rights for all. In the region as a whole, there is still uneven access to and use of modern contraception and unmet need for family planning. This is particularly the case among people with disabilities, marginalised groups and those living in fragile settings. All of the CPDs before you include sexual and reproductive health as a core results area, responding to the particular national setting, supporting national plans and programmes and building capacity where needed, including in humanitarian settings. A significant feature of our work in the region and in these country programmes particularly relates to follow-up on the UN Convention of the Rights of Persons with Disabilities as it relates to UNFPA's mandate. New partnerships are in place with community-led networks, the private sector and organisations such as Special Olympics and Women-enabled international. While the number of new infections of HIV has declined globally by 23% since 2010, in Eastern Europe and Central Asia, the infections have increased by 72%. As of 2020, there are a total of 1.7 million people living with HIV in Eastern Europe and Central Asia, with 170,000 new HIV infections and 35,000 new AIDS-related deaths just last year. In line with national priorities, UNFPA's comparative advantages, partnerships with other actors and innovative community and youth-led organisations, the draft CPDs before you reflect UNFPA's mandated response, focusing on key populations, advocating for comprehensive sexuality education and healthy lifestyles and access to contraception so that no one is left behind. Our draft country programme documents embrace the notion of promoting positive social change for the protection, promotion and respect for human rights. The UNFPA country offices through their new CPDs will work with partners to ensure we engage with men and boys, that we harness technology, communication and innovation and that we bring generations together and change discriminatory attitudes and behaviours. We recognise that only through these approaches will we be able to empower individuals and families to balance their work and life aspirations, to choose when and how many children to have and to ensure the family and individual space is free from violence, stigma or discrimination. In closing, Mr President, distinguished members of the Executive Board, as we see events unfolding in the region, the underlying principles of human rights, equality and leaving no one behind at the centre of our six country programme documents have become ever more relevant for building forward better and ensuring rights and choices for all. I trust that these draft country programme documents provide the quality of assistance needed in these challenging times so that every pregnancy is wanted, every childbirth is safe and all young people fulfil their potential. I thank you Mr President, distinguished members of the Board for your attention and I look forward to your feedback.
I thank Ms Hamitich for her presentation and her update on work in her region. I am now going to open the floor and we already have a list of speakers and I will give the floor to the distinguished permanent representative of Belarus. Alana, you have the floor please.
Thank you very much, excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, dear colleagues, distinguished Executive Board members. It is indeed my honour and my privilege to address this Executive Board. We in the country, in the Republic of Belarus, attach special importance to the country programme document for Belarus for the period 2021-2025 as presented. We consider it as an extremely important commitment to further progress in sustainable development of my country. Let me also express our deep appreciation of longstanding and steady partnership between UNFPA and the Belarusian government as well as other relevant stakeholders in such areas of national priorities. in such areas of national priority as demography, aging, gender equality, maternal and reproductive health. As a part of a concerted effort from the UN agencies, UNFPA has contributed significantly to our collective work to advance social protection while simultaneously working on strengthening our national health system. Let me highlight just a few positive examples of our partnership with UNFPA. Belarus appreciates the funds activities aiming to counteract gender-based violence and domestic violence, as well as to integrate gender-responsive family policy. For instance, the initiative on parent smart policy implementation. We welcome the UNFPA's efforts in raising awareness of population aging, which is of special importance to my country, and in supporting research and data collection to provide a solid base for policies and planning. We appreciate support from the UNFPA to improve public awareness and to prepare for the processing of census data, which helped us hold population census there in Belarus in October last year. We have a positive example of cooperation with UNFPA in the sphere of the maternal health of women with disabilities. Under the program of Women's Health, no limits. Dear colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, today the world is fighting, facing unprecedented challenges caused by COVID-19 and its health, social, and economic impacts and consequences. Even more intensive and closer multilateral cooperation is needed, including cooperation between UN entities and countries in order to get back on track of sustainable development. We would like to underline that Belarus has always been and remains, will be strongly committed to the implementation of the ICPD and the Agenda 2030 for Sustainable Development. The Republic of Belarus is determined to continue its close partnership and cooperation with the UNFPA to achieve the priorities as identified in the new CPD in the spheres of sexual and reproductive health, gender equality, women's empowerment, and development of demographic policies. The proposed CPD is built on successful lessons learned from previous programs.
Ambassador, you have to wrap up, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure, sure. Let me just express our support to the UNFPA Country Program Document for the period 2021-2025. We look forward to structurally engaging with you in the course of its implementation. And let me conclude by reiterating our commitment to the effective and efficient cooperation with UNFPA at all levels. I thank you all for your attention.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Belarus. And of course, if you, my apologies for having to step in, but we're trying to keep time, we have a long list. But if you do wish to put your, the entire statement on paper smart, I think we will welcome that. So feel, we encourage you to do that. The next speaker on my list is the distinguished Permanent Representative of Kazakhstan. Ambassador, you have the floor, Excellency.
Members of the Executive Board, colleagues, excellencies, distinguished chair, I would like to thank Regional Director Ms. Alana Amitaj for her informative presentation of the country program document for Kazakhstan. On behalf of the government of Kazakhstan, I would like to express our gratitude to the UNFPA country office for long-lasting and productive cooperation. Since 1992, UNFPA has been supporting the government initiatives and efforts in reducing maternity mortality, improving the gender equality and reproductive health, especially of women and young people. Many good achievements and progress have been made since that time. With more birth and fewer deaths, Kazakhstan has achieved stable population growth after a period of decline. We have also achieved considerable progress in reducing maternity, I'm sorry, maternal mortality ratio from 60.9 per 1,000 of live births in 2014 to 14 in 2018. The government of Kazakhstan and UNFPA work together towards improving access to quality reproductive health services, strengthening national legislation, policies, and projects to address the needs of most vulnerable groups. During the pandemic, UNFPA continues working in partnership with governments to develop and disseminate much-needed information for most vulnerable, including pregnant and mothers with newborns, about ways to minimize risk of contracting the COVID-19. There is now a greater need for prevention, risk mitigation, and response services at the time when these services are reduced and resources are being diverted to respond to the overall health crisis. Dear colleagues, today we are pleased to extend our support to the country program, which was developed in a constructive manner with key partners. The proposed country program document is aligned with national development priorities, including the Kazakhstan 2050 Strategy and Agenda 2030. To conclude, I would like to reiterate our support and commitment to the efficient cooperation with UNFPA in the course of implementation of the new country program document for Kazakhstan. I thank you.
I thank the prominent representative of Kazakhstan. And I will give the floor to the permanent representative of Kazakhstan.
Mr. President, distinguished members of the Executive Board, UNFPA leadership, let me first welcome Ms. Diane Keita as the new-appointed UNFPA Deputy Executive Director for Program and wish her success in this important role. The government of Turkmenistan appreciated the longstanding partnership with UNFPA and continues to strengthen its cooperation with the UNFPA Country Office in Turkmenistan. This partnership has brought new opportunities for the right of women and girls in the country and expanded the implementation of the 2030 Development Agenda. Turkmenistan has achieved notable progress in the recent years in reducing preventable maternal mortality and morbidity. According to the United Nations estimate published in 2019, the maternal mortality ratio is among the lowest in the Eastern Europe and Central Asia region. UNFPA has continued to provide substantive policy and technical support in response to government priorities which have been translated into concrete and effective action. Some of the notable results achieved with the UNFPA's support include a significant reduction in the maternal mortality, which we are committed to sustain and further bring down the maternal death to zero by 2030. The procurement of the family planning commodities, which has been funded by state budgets since 2017 and to which women at risk have free access. The Implementation National Action Plan on Gender Equality and the National Survey on Domestic Violence being carried out in the first ever in the country. Last year, the Turkmenistan delegation participated in the Nairobi Summit and reinforced its comment towards the implementation of the ICPD agenda. The proposed country program has been developed in wide consultation with government counterparts, public organization, as well as women, men, and young people, including vulnerable groups from different parts of the country. It is fully aligned with the United Nations Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework and will ultimately contribute to the achievement of the Sustainable Development Goals. It reaffirms the country commitment to ending unmet need for family planning, gender-based violence, and preventable maternal deaths through improved access to quality health services, effective advocacy, and strengthening accountability. The impact of COVID-19 pandemic on the Health and Social Protection Services places growing the mind for stronger partnership and collaboration with the UNFPA in promoting maternal and reproductive health, advancing gender equality, preventing gender-based violence, and promoting positive social-cultural norms. The country program will provide upstream support to the government to implement the priorities of the National Program for Socioeconomic Development 2011-2030 and their Presidential Program for Socioeconomic Development of Turkmenistan 2019-2025. Today, we are pleased to extend our support to the fifth country program for Turkmenistan. And I would like to take this opportunity to commend the UNFPA country team in Ashkabat for their hard work and dedication. Let me express sincere gratitude to Ms. Alana Amitaj, UNFPA Regional Director, and Ms. Julia Valazin, the Country Director, for their commitment and continued meaningful engagement with Turkmenistan. And lastly, I would like to thank Dr. Natalia Canem, UNFPA Executive Director, for the continued partnership, which is crucial as ever before amid and involving global pandemic. We look forward to working closely with UNFPA in implementation of the new program. Thank you, Chairman.
I thank, thank you very much. I thank the prominent representative. And we now would hear from the prominent representative of Bosnia and Herzegovina. You have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of Executive Board, dear colleagues. I appreciate the announcement today of the country's program for Bosnia and Herzegovina. My delegation is grateful for the consultative process of the country's program documents and thanks UNFPA for the same. I will take the opportunity to commend the UNFPA's Regional Director for Eastern Europe and Central Asia, Ms. Alana Amitaj, for presenting the Bosnia and Herzegovina Country Program for 2021 to 2025. I appreciate very much the collaboration between UNFPA and Bosnia and Herzegovina at the global, regional, and country level. It's important to remind that UNFPA support Bosnia and Herzegovina for the last 25 years, helped to tackle our development-critical areas. Prevention of cervical cancer, equal access to reproductive health services for youth, the threatening of a social and demographic data collection, and prevention and management of gender-based violence are just some of them. Indeed, I wish to state that the collaboration is informed by mutual engagement on the priorities of the country, the Sustainable Development Goals, and the UNFPA strategic plans. Mr. President, please allow me to speak on the issues identified in the country program. The main interventions highlighted include the support to health systems, advancing sexual and reproductive health, social cohesion, and sustenance of peace, engagement of a young people to achieve prosperity, ensuring that all peoples are included in development initiative as well as tackling the challenges brought about by population changes in the country. These are issues the government is currently tackling, hence appreciate the support of UNFPA and partners. May I commend the country's office in Sarajevo for its continued engagement with authorities and partners and look forward to working closely to achieve the program results. Finally, Mr. President, I would like to reiterate my delegation's support to you and the Bureau until the successful conclusion of the session. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Bosnia and Herzegovina for your presentation, for your statement. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative and prominent representative of Serbia. You have the floor, Excellency.
Thank you, Mr. President, the member of Executive Board, and Alana Amitaj, for your remarks. Like many other countries in Southeast Europe, Serbia is faced with challenging demographic trends: decreasing population numbers, fast aging, and fertility rate below the replacement level, and outmigration. The challenges the trend presents are the priorities of my country government. To address them, we initiate a number of measures which include the development and streamlining of the implementation of the strategic document, as well as those related to reproductive health, gender equality, youth, population policies, and social inclusions. Better demographic future is one of the main national priorities of the Republic of Serbia. Building inclusive societies for all generation is the goal Serbia is trying to achieve in partnership with public, civil, and private sector. It goes without saying that achieving this goal is not an easy task, especially during the COVID-19 pandemics, and that special attention should be paid to issues of young women, girls, migrants, internally displaced persons, and persons with disabilities, marginalized groups. Serbia highly appreciates its cooperation with UNFPA in the field of research, data generation, policy development, and projects in the field of sexual and reproductive health, gender equality, youth development, aging, and family-friendly policies. The government is fairly committed to work together with UNFPA in advising inclusive societies with equal rights for all, contributing in that way to communities' wide prosperity. The aim of my country is to capitalize and further elaborate the partnership in the future, in particularly during the implementation of the new UNFPA Country Program Document for Serbia for the period 2021-2025, which was developed through the consultative process with the key national partners and designed to respond to the national priorities stated in the strategic documents of government of Serbia. Serbia is looking forward to working closely with UNFPA on implementation of its new country program document through building human capital of its population, improving people's health and innovative skills aimed at bringing about stable and prosperous future for its society. All these efforts are aimed at advising the implementation of 2030 Agenda in the country and fully aligned with the draft UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework 2021-2025. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Serbia. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey. You have the floor, please, Turkey.
I would kindly ask the Turkish delegate to unmute herself. We've asked her to unmute if she could click on that button and she'd be able to...
Sorry, Sam, I'm not hearing.
No, she's unmuted. She can proceed. Thank you, Ambassador.
Hi, hi, thanks, Sam, sir, for this coordination. My DPR is now here, and she would like to deliver the remarks herself. Ilge Koçit, Ms. Ilge.
Sure.
Thank you, Ambassador.
Could you kindly indicate the DPR's name so we could just request her to unmute her?
Sure. I'm just writing it on the chat box.
Yes, please.
I still can't see their name. If they're able to indicate Turkey in their, oh, there you go.
Sorry?
There you go, I have it, okay.
Okay, okay, thank you. Can you hear me now? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity to speak to the Executive Board today. And of course, thanks to Mrs. Amitaj for her presentation on Turkey's CPD for 2021-2025. UNFBI has been a valuable partner for Turkey over the years in the implementation and strengthening of our national policies on sexual and reproductive health, gender equality, and women's empowerment, and population dynamics. gender equality and women's empowerment and population dynamics. Turkey is strongly committed to the goals of improving the living standards and rights of women and girls and ensuring their full and equal participation in all spheres of life. And Turkey's National Action Plan on Combating Violence Against Women builds on international conventions with a particular focus on the Council of Europe Convention on Preventing and Combating Violence Against Women and Domestic Violence, also known as the Istanbul Convention. The action plan incorporates an effective monitoring and assessment mechanism with greater binding power upon the institutions. We are pleased to see that our cooperation with UNFPA is yielding results on the ground in national and regional contexts and we remain ready to enhance this cooperation, particularly in addressing the challenges arising from complex humanitarian issues, including COVID response. Our collaboration with UNFPA in the area of refugee and migrant health has become crucial as Turkey hosts more than 3.5 million Syrians which have been granted free access to all public services, including healthcare. We worked closely with UNFPA Country Office during the preparation of our new CPD, which we hope will contribute to the implementation of our 11th National Development Plan and our appreciation goes to UNFPI for this effort. We're glad that the proposed budget for the new cycle has been increased compared to the previous CPD. However, considering the magnitude of refugee population in Turkey and cross-border projects of UNFPA from Gaziantep to Syria, we believe that there is a need to further expand resources. UNFPA can achieve further impact by mobilizing additional funds in an efficient manner, particularly in refugee and migrant help as well as furthering its work on improving transparency and efficiency gains in line with the UNDS reform. This will also enhance our strategic collaboration at the national level and improve coordination on the ground. We believe that UNFPA will continue to work collectively, effectively towards improving the integration with the other UN agencies, including the resident coordinator in the implementation of the new CPD. Once again, thank you to UNFPA and we look forward to cooperating further. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We thank the delegate, Turkey. I will now ask Ms. Armitage if she would like to respond to some of the statements and questions. Armitage.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I would like to thank their Excellencies, the permanent representatives of Belarus, Kazakhstan, Turkmenistan and Bosnia and Herzegovina, as well as the Deputy Permanent Representative of Turkey and the Representative of Serbia for their expressions of support to the UNFPA Country Program documents but also for highlighting the results of our longstanding partnership, including on the reduction of maternal death and cervical cancer, working to eliminate GBB, improving access to family planning, empowering women and most recently, our work on disability, demographic resilience and aging. I also want to thank the Turkey DPR for the comments on refugee and migrant health in line with UNDS reform. I think that during the Decade for Action and within the current COVID-19 pandemic, our work to support national leadership to advance the ICPD Agenda in the region is more relevant than ever and we do look forward to our continued collaboration to achieve the results that are set out in each of the country program documents. Mr. President, distinguished delegates, distinguished members of the Executive Board, I would like, on behalf of our Eastern Europe-Central Asia regional team, let me reiterate UNFPA's commitment to working with all of you to achieve the transformative results set out in the CPDs. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank Ms. Armitage for her comments and thank you for your presentation and for sharing with us the work that is being carried out in your region under which you have responsibility. Thank you so much. Distinguished delegates, Excellencies, do I take it that the Executive Board wishes to approve the country program documents for the Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, including the results and the resources framework for Kosovo, noting that references to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the context of the Security Council Resolution 1244, 1999, Turkey and Turkishistan. I see no objections. It is so decided. And we shall now, distinguished delegates, we shall now have the pleasure to invite Mr. Anderson, Regional Director for Asia and the Pacific, to present the country programs for Indonesia and Timor-Leste. Mr. Anderson, sir, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and distinguished members of the Executive Board, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon and good morning from Bangkok. I am pleased to provide, first of all, an overview of trends, opportunities and challenges in the Asia-Pacific. Asia and the Pacific, the largest and the most diverse region in the world, has experienced substantial socioeconomic transformation, including significant improvements in access to sexual and reproductive health services. Rapid economic growth across much of the region has led to reduction of people living in extreme poverty. Unfortunately, this growth has not benefited people equally. Approximately one-quarter of people in the region live in poverty with a growing divide between those who have access to opportunities and those who do not. Rising inequalities coupled with inadequate investments in health, education and social protection have resulted in too many people lacking access to the social services that would enable them to expand their opportunities. Despite efforts towards universal health coverage, out-of-pocket expenditures for health are still unacceptably high. These inequalities in access to income and services have been further exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic, which has reminded us that no path to 2030 will be successful unless we ensure that our efforts, including increasing access to comprehensive health services, reach all, especially those who are left behind. Asia and the Pacific is also undergoing a historic demographic transition, which affects pathways towards sustainable development. Countries in the region are at different stages of this shift, from young urban populations to older rural populations. More than half of the world's young population, people aged 10 to 24, live in Asia and the Pacific. A number of countries in the region have potential to benefit from the demographic dividend, provided sufficient investments are made in education, health and decent employment. UNFPA is working with governments and partnering with young people for policies and programs that promote young people's well-being to ensure that all young people are able to fulfill their aspirations. Asia and the Pacific also has countries at a more advanced stage of the demographic transition, experiencing rapid population aging. By 2050, one-quarter of the region's population will be over 60 years old, the result of decreasing fertility and increasing longevity. UNFPA is supporting governments to identify new approaches to ensure inclusive rights-based and equal services for older persons, including in the context of the COVID-19. We are also working with governments to address long-term demographic shifts towards aging through a life-course approach, whereby increasing investment in sexual, reproductive, maternal, neonatal and child health can improve long-term lifestyles and promote healthy aging. Persistent negative social norms and gender inequality prevent the realization of universal access to sexual and reproductive health and reproductive rights, which requires more concerted attention to dismantle historic and structural inequalities that undermine the achievement of gender equality and the empowerment of women and girls. The region has seen a significant reduction in maternal deaths. However, we need to do more. Every hour, 10 women in Asia-Pacific die as a result of pregnancy and childbirth. That is 10 women too many. While more women have access to contraceptives, there remain over 80 million women with unmet need for family planning. Despite strengthening of legal frameworks across much of the region, gender-based violence and other harmful practices remain pervasive. And UNFPA is committed to supporting governments' efforts to deliver on the ICPD 25 commitments in line with national development priorities. We are working in collaboration with governments, communities, civil society and the UN to bring about the societal change necessary so that the lives of women and girls are valued equally with the lives of men and boys. UNFPA is supporting countries to develop tailored strategies to end preventable maternal mortality and address last-mile challenges. And UNFPA is also supporting countries to address unmet need, ensuring human rights-based approaches to family planning and helping countries to address challenges related to disruption in access to contraceptives due to COVID-19. And UNFPA is working with governments to strengthen prevalence data and data on violence against women and health sector response to gender-based violence and addressing common drivers of harmful practices, including harmful gender norms and low value given to girls. In the context of COVID-19, UNFPA is investing in building capacity of GBV Response Service providers to provide timely, quality and confidential services to survivors of GBV, including through remote service delivery modalities. Asia and the Pacific, the world's most disaster-prone region, is experiencing an increasing number of disasters and climate-related events, with complex, multi-hazard disasters becoming more frequent. The impact of humanitarian crises, natural disasters and climate change threaten development gains and widen inequalities with the severest impact on those most left behind. UNFPA is working with partners at regional and country levels to strengthen capacities to address the need for women and girls during emergencies and through a regional pre-positioning initiative, UNFPA is ensuring that supplies are available quickly for lifesaving sexual and reproductive health and gender-based violence response services. The COVID-19 pandemic has shown that fast access to critical supplies saves lives. With over 5 million confirmed cases of COVID-19, much of the region is still in the midst of the immediate response. UNFPA is supporting governments across the region to ensure continuity of lifesaving sexual and reproductive health and gender-based violence services. And we are also working to ensure that young people continue to have access to comprehensive sexuality education and advocating for the human rights protection and health needs of older persons. In Asia and the Pacific, UNFPA, in close collaboration with United Nations partners, is supporting governments, civil society and other stakeholders to forge a path forward to support countries in building back better by using the ICPD Program of Action and the SDGs to guide post-COVID-19 recovery. Through the country-level socioeconomic response to COVID-19 frameworks as well as through the cooperation frameworks, UNFPA is contributing to creating more equal and resilient societies. This is supported by our efforts to strengthen data generation, analysis and use, including through the 2020 round of census. To support the Asian-Pacific region on its path to 2030, as we have embarked on the Decade of Action, and UNFPA is strengthening our ability to identify and respond to emerging issues. This includes assessing the socioeconomic impact of the pandemic and implications for achievement of the ICPD Program of Action and the SDGs in collaboration with UN agencies. At the regional level and in the spirit of UN reform, we are developing guidance for a gap analysis on public services and social protection in the COVID-19 response, as well as materials on including gender equality and human rights in rapid assessments and socioeconomic surveys on COVID-19 response. And UNFPA is working with our partners at the regional and country level to find better ways of working and to develop solutions that respond better to complexity and the evolving challenges the region is facing today and those that may come tomorrow, including by fostering the culture of innovation across the region. Finally, Mr. President, the two country programs being presented to you today for Indonesia and Timor-Leste reflect just all of this invention. The country programs are tailored to respond to their respective national contexts, draw on UNFPA's comparative advantage in providing technical and policy advice and are aligned with respective United Nations Sustainable Development Cooperation Frameworks and national development plans. As the Deputy Executive Director mentioned, the current country program for China is being extended for two months following the postponement of its consideration at this session. The 10th Country Program for Indonesia will strengthen capacities at national and sub-national levels for integrated sexual and reproductive health, information and services for the most vulnerable, address young people's sexual and reproductive health, development and well-being, prevent and respond to gender-based violence and harmful practices and strengthen the use of disaggregated data and demographic analysis for policies and programs. The Fourth Country Program for Timor-Leste will strengthen the health system's capacity to deliver sexual and reproductive health services, support young people through a focus of healthy relationships and comprehensive sexuality education, strengthen multi-sectoral gender-based violence response services and develop capacity to generate and use disaggregated data. Both country programs are also fully aligned with the Agenda 2030 principles of human rights, gender equality and the empowerment of women and girls in order to bring about the transformative change that is required and to achieve sustainable development and to leave no one behind. I thank you so much for your attention. Thank you.
I thank Mr. Anderson for his presentation. And I will open the floor for statements and or questions. I give the floor... Excuse me, I give the floor to the DPR, Deputy Permanent Representative of Indonesia. You have the floor, please.
Thank you, Excellency and dear colleagues. We appreciate UNFPA for the constructive partnership with the government of Indonesia and look forward to future collaboration that particularly addresses the high level of maternal mortality and unmet need of family planning. Following our last round of consultation, we acknowledge the efforts of the UNFPA to understand and accommodate our concerns. They have become our national baseline position in many regional and multilateral forums. We also thank all members of the Executive Board to proceed this CPD forward. Based on this document, UNFPA will support the national ownership and efforts of Indonesia to achieve zero maternal deaths, zero unmet need of family planning and zero gender-based violence against women and girls as well as other forms of harmful practices. This revised version has been aligned with our national priorities on Indonesia's National Midterm Development Plan 2020-2024, the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development and 2021-2025 UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework. By closely collaborating with the UNFPA, the government of Indonesia aims to achieve all targeted outcomes, from sexual and reproductive health to population dynamics and data. Following the endorsement of this CPD, the government of Indonesia and UNFPA will work together to develop the Country Program Action Plan for 2021-2025 involving all concerned line ministries and government agencies. Last but not least, we thank for continued cooperation of the Executive Board and UNFPA towards our national development priorities and thereby support Indonesia to raise our potential. Thank you, Excellency.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Indonesia, and I give the floor to the Permanent Representative of Timor-Leste. Ambassador, you have the floor, please.
Mr. President, for giving me the floor. Good afternoon to you and the members of the Joint Executive Board, as well as to Mr. Anderson. And thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your very comprehensive briefing. It is a privilege for me to address the Executive Board this afternoon. And I'd like to start by welcoming very much the fourth UNFPA Country Program Document for 2021 to 2025. The CPD, which draws from the experience of previous UNFPA programs in Timor-Leste, contributes to strategic priority three and four of the recently adopted UNSDCF, namely dearly childhood development and lifelong learning outcomes and skills, and high-quality healthcare and well-being, and is linked to SDGs three and four and is aligned with Timor-Leste's National Strategic Development Plan. The CPD contains comprehensive programs with four essential outcomes for Timor-Leste: sexual and reproductive health, adolescents and youth, gender equality and women's empowerment, and population dynamics. The CPD is based on human rights principles and gender equality and assists the government of Timor-Leste to achieve its objectives in investing in human capital and creating conditions for greater inclusion and addressing inequalities by developing the capacity of service providers, addressing gender-based violence, and hence the well-being and dignity of all Timorese. With its important focus on adolescents and youth, the CPD also assists the government to address the many challenges of our youth goal and enable progress towards a positive demographic dividend. We welcome UNFPA's technical expertise in these areas and ongoing engagement and contribution to the policy dialogue, especially in view of the challenges posed by COVID-19 pandemic. We also welcome the establishment of the Steering Committee led by the RC and the Ministry of Foreign Affairs to oversee implementation and wish to stress the importance of partnerships, including with civil society, based on the New Deal principles for engagement in post-conflict, conflict-affected, and countries in transition, specifically with regards country-owned and country-led systems and processes, which Timor-Leste is part of. Timor-Leste looks forward to continued partnership and strong collaboration with UNFPA in the implementation of the CPD. And we express once again our appreciation to UNFPA for its important contribution to Timor-Leste's development. But thank you once again, Mr. President, and the members of the board for your continued support.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Timor-Leste for her statement. If there are no further requests for the floor, I would like to invite Mr. Anderson to respond to any comments or questions in the statements. Mr. Anderson, you have the floor, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I just want to thank the Permanent Representative of Timor-Leste and the Deputy Permanent Representative of Indonesia for your positive feedback and your comments. And rest assured that the whole team of UNFPA in this region will are looking forward to continue working with you and implement these two country programs. So with that, Mr. President, over to you. And thank you so much again from Bangkok here in Thailand. Thank you.
I thank you, and I thank you for staying up this late, both you and the colleague in Eastern Europe. Thank you for your participation in the meeting and for your presentation. Distinguished delegates, excellencies, do I now take it that the Executive Board wishes to approve the country programs and country documents for both Indonesia and Timor-Leste? I hear no objections. It's so decided. I see... I will now move on, distinguished delegates, excellencies. I now have the pleasure to invite Mr. Harold Robinson, Regional Director for Latin America and the Caribbean, to present the country program for Colombia. Harold, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Distinguished delegates, ladies and gentlemen, I'm honored to introduce, for your consideration, the draft Country Program Document for Colombia for the period 2021-2024 and the one-year country program extension of El Salvador. Colombia Country Program aims at bridging inequalities and strengthening the resilience of institutions, people, and communities, improving access to quality, comprehensive, sexual and reproductive health services and gender-based violence services across the humanitarian, development, and peace countries, particularly for those left-behind groups, those living in rural areas, in situations of human mobility, or affected by violence and poverty, excomattered families, Afro-descendants, and indigenous communities, people of sexual diversity, and people with disabilities. In the region, their focus on the furthest left behind becomes even more critical as the COVID-19 pandemic ravages across Latin America and the Caribbean, causing a disproportionate impact on the most vulnerable groups, especially women, children, adolescents, and young people, Afro-descendants, and indigenous peoples, people in situations of human mobility, and those of their sexual diversity. The pandemic is expected to result in the worst recession in a century, causing a sharp rise in unemployment, poverty, and extreme poverty, exacerbating therefore existing inequalities. For instance, the number of people in poverty is expected to increase by forty-five point four million in 2020, affecting a staggering thirty-seven point three percent of the region's population. The pandemic has impacted on women's access to healthcare, including sexual reproductive health services and gender-based violence services. confinement measures have led to a sharp increase in domestic violence and femicides in a region already characterized by high rates of gender-based violence. Preliminary assessments show rising maternal mortality, unintended pregnancy, and gender-based violence cases over the first semester of 2020 if you compare with the previous year. These assessments will inform ongoing and new Sustainable Development Cooperation Frameworks across the regions and certainly the country programs that will come in the future to the board. The COVID-19 pandemic has intensified ongoing humanitarian crises in the region, blurring the lines between development and humanitarian work and prompting the UN organizations and development partners to increase collaboration and transform the ways of working. UN agencies are increasingly participating in joint programs and resource mobilization initiatives in support of national responses. More than half of the funds mobilized by UNFPA in 2020 is coming through the multi-partner trust fund mechanism and joint programs, a significant proportion of them through the EU-funded spotlight. UNFPA is providing advocacy and technical assistance to government counterparts and strategic partners to ensure the continuity of sexual and reproductive and gender-based violence services. This includes prenatal and postnatal care, safe births, access to contraceptives, gender-based violence, prevention and response protection equipment for frontline health workers, including midwives, and data generation analysis. UNFPA also actively participates in humanitarian coordination mechanisms, calling in both the sexual and reproductive health and gender-based violence cluster. UNFPA is drawing special attention to the differential impact of COVID-19 on specific populations groups, as I said before. And we did so, for instance, through the elaboration of inter-agency survey on youth and youth concerns in the context of the pandemic. Mr. President, distinguished delegates, in closing, I would like to thank member states for their continued support to advance the ICPD agenda in the region and reiterate my deep appreciation to the government of Colombia for its leadership and commitment to the UN reform and longstanding partnership with UNFPA. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank Mr. Anderson for his presentation. I will now open the floor for statements, and the speaker I have up is the distinguished Permanent Representative of Colombia. You have the floor, please, Ambassador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, excellencies and members of the Executive Board. Mr. Harold Robinson, thank you for all your support and your commitment with my country. I would like to express on behalf of the government of Colombia our gratitude for the approval of the Country Program Document at this second ordinary session of the Executive Board. This is the result of the commitment and collaborative spirit that exists between Colombia and the United Nations Development System, and we work together in favor of those who need it most. I must emphasize that the program was prepared amid the COVID-19 pandemic. For this reason, the CPD expresses our interest and willingness in improving international cooperation in support of the efforts of states to respond to this emergency. This was built in coordination between United Nations Population Point Office in Colombia and the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. The regional office, the document, is aligned with the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development and with the priorities established in the Cooperation Framework for 2020-2023, which was signed on March 19 of 2020. In the aforementioned framework, three priorities are defined and set these parameters for cooperation with all United Nations agencies. First, stabilization, peace, with legality, migration as a factor of development, and third, the support for catalytic SDGs. Likewise, the CPD responds to the national challenges and priorities defined in the National Development Plan 2018-2022 PAC for Colombia PAC for legality. For these implementations, the UNFPA will support Colombia to coordinate and strengthen its national response capacities in the area of sexual and reproductive health, as well as to combat gender violence. It will contribute to the empowerment of women, youth, and adolescents in my country, with the belief that it is essential to support those who are most vulnerable. This document provides a framework for action based on our most pressing needs. Colombia in this sense will benefit from the valuable funds expertise. I also want to emphasize that this new world cycle builds on the lessons learned from past collaborative efforts. We are interested in increasing the efficiency and impact of cooperation by promoting inter-agency work. This responds to the mandates of the reform proposed by the Secretary-General, which Colombia fully supported. Mr. President, Madame Director, I would like to conclude by expressing my sincere recognition for all the work that the United Nations Population Fund has done in Colombia, especially in addressing the enormous migration flow from Venezuela. I reiterate our commitment to continue strengthening the cooperation in favor of the sexual and reproductive health of the most vulnerable people in my country. So we leave no one behind. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Colombia for his statement. And as I have no further representative calling for the floor, I'll ask Mr. Robinson to respond, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, expressing my appreciation for the statement of Ambassador Fernandez de Soto, Permanent Representative of Colombia, express our gratitude for Colombia for the leadership, commitment to the UN reform, also our appreciation to all the governments in the region for the support to the ICPD and the Montreal Consensus, and recommend ourselves to the supporting the region as it faces its most challenging crisis yet. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank Mr. Robinson for his comments and for sharing his report and the presentation made. I have no further representative asking for the floor. So, members of the board, distinguished delegates, excellencies, I take it that the Executive Board wishes to approve the Country Program Documents for Colombia. I hear no objections. It is so decided. Distinguished delegates, our last action under this agenda item is to consider the extension of the UNFPA Country Programs, which the Deputy Executive Director for Programs had introduced in her introduction. The board has been asked to take note of the first two months' extension for the Country Program for China and the first one-year extension for the Country Program for Algeria, Cameroon, El Salvador, Lebanon, Libya, Mozambique, Tajikistan, Zambia, Zimbabwe. These have been approved by the UNFPA Executive Director. In addition, the board is asked to approve the following three-country program extensions, two years by two years' extension of Burkina Faso as a second six-month extension for the Country Program in Malagaska and the fifth one-year extension for the program in Yemen. Does any delegation wish to take the floor regarding these extensions?
Ambassador Robinson, we had the chargé de faire of Madagascar requesting the floor.
Malagaska, please, the floor is yours.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To begin with, I would like to apologize for the absence of the responsible ministries from the capital to this important meeting due to the time difference. Since Madagascar is among state members whose country program extension is considered under the current agenda, I would like to mention that after this current pandemic crisis in line with the vision building back better, our next country program will be a key lever to restore and revive... to restore and revive UNFPA actions in a better way. Under the UN STCF and in accordance with the national strategies. The UN system, together with the national authorities and other stakeholders, have conducted this month a series of consultations for drawing up and tailoring the UN STCF for Madagascar, which is of importance for its population. But most significantly, in order to align an international cooperation framework with our national plan emergence of Madagascar running from 2020 to 2023. Also presently at its finalization phase of designing. We are confident that this six-month extension will offer a smooth transition between the current CPD and following the new framework. We also believe that this extension will be crucial because it will focus on national priorities such as maternal health, prevention and treatment of obstetrical fistula, family planning services, promotion of demographic dividends, gender equality, humanitarian actions and promotion of data availability, just to name a few. My delegation would like to thank UNFPA for its fruitful cooperation implemented during the 2015-2020 period declared in 2018 as satisfactory in terms of coherence, relevance and level of achievement. Likewise, I would like to express our gratitude to members of the Executive Board for their continued support. We warmly look forward to their approval to the extension and thereafter to a strong combined effort for seamless people-centered UNFPA country programs implementation. And thank you, Mr. Chair and the members of the Executive Board. And I do apologize for my camera, which is such stuff. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished delegates from Malagasy. And I give the floor to the distinguished delegates from Burkina Faso. Burkina Faso, you have the floor, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, everyone. Mr. President, Deputy Executive Director of UNFPA. Dear Member of the Executive Board, dear Representative, I'm sorry I couldn't turn on my video. As you all know, Burkina Faso, like others' countries, is facing with the COVID-19 pandemic, which occur in the context of insecurity due to terrorist attacks in France. Since 2015 in Burkina, resulting in an unprecedented humanitarian crisis marked essentially by IDP's difficult condition of living, especially for those living in the north part of the country, community conflict. The number of IDP's increased from eighty-seven thousand at the end of January 2019 to one million thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-four as of August 8, 2020, the majority of whom are children and women. In addition to that, the OS population are facing with the gradual deterioration of their living condition. Because they are the first to share the resources before the intervention of the government and the partners. This condition is getting worse by the degradation of natural resources, the scarcity of Arab land and the impact of climate change, which includes the vulnerability of population. The government with the support of its partner, particularly the United Nations system, is doing everything possible to provide those populations with the necessary assistance, even though enormous challenges remain to be met. This is why Burkina Faso commend UNFPA for its important support in protecting and empowering women and girls. The extension of our country program in the view of the relevance of the four expected output, which now take into account the humanitarian emergency situation and the culture of peace, will contribute to, first, strengthen action for the protection of women and girls, particularly in areas with high security challenges and especially in localities hosting IDP's. Second, it will help to strengthen the promotion of the abandonment of child marriage and female genital mutilation. Also, it will help to strengthen the resilience of the population, particularly the IDP's and OS population. And it will strengthen the promotion of sexual and reproductive health and the promotion of comprehensive sexuality education. Mr. President, Member of the Board, unfortunately, it should be noted that the family as an entity is not sufficiently taken into account in the program. Even though it is the basic unit of society. It is through the family, it is through the family that the culture of peace and social cohesion is first learning. The family therefore deserve all the intention it requires. To conclude, Mr. President, I reiterate the gratitude of Burkina Faso for the effort already made by UNFPA and all the actors and partners who are fighting for population resilience. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished delegate of Burkina Faso for her presentation. As we have no other members asking for the floor, I'm going to ask Madame Kiette if she wants to make a couple of comments and maybe even ask her regional representative to join her. Madame Kiette?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thank the distinguished delegates for their comment. First, one from Madagascar for highlighting the extension of the CPD. And during the extension period, we will continue to focus on priority and results identified within their seven country program within the context of COVID-19 pandemic. As for the distinguished delegate of Burkina Faso, we take good note of her comments as well. And we know that the peace and security is a big matter in Burkina currently. And we will continue with all our UN sister agency and international community to support Burkina to ensure that inclusiveness and the most affected population will be taken care of. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank Madame Kiette for her comments. If there is no other distinguished delegates, I take it that that the Executive Board wishes us to take note of the country programs extension for Algeria, Cameroon, China, El Salvador, Libya, Lebanon, Libya, Mozambique, Tajikistan, Zambia, Zimbabwe. I see no objections. It is so done. Distinguished delegates, further, do I take it that the Executive Board wishes to approve the country program extension for Burkina Faso, Malagasy and Yemen? I take it that there are no extension, no, I'm sorry, no objection. It is so decided. We now note, we will now move on. Before I close this meeting, I would like to give the floor to Mr. Samuel. Sam, to see if he has any further information or wisdom for us. Sam, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Ambassador. I don't think I have any wisdom to impart, but just to say thank you to all delegates for engaging in a very productive session for the UNFPA segment today. We're very grateful for the support and the high level of support and engagement. But just a big thank you on behalf of the organization for everyone for their engagement and support. And likewise for their constructive engagement and the decision-making process as well. Thank you.
I thank you, Sam. Distinguished delegates, excellencies, this brings us to the end of another enthraving day and another session of our meeting. And I thank you for your participation. Those of you in capital, especially those who have stayed up long past the midnight and long into the night. We want to thank you for your very deep dedication, your support and your contribution. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador. Thank you very much.